Commission members are on.
We don't have a quorum at this point.
We do not. I thought we were expecting.
Okay, Tom, now I should be able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now, thanks. And are you going to be able to share the presentation then since Josh and you are joining via Microsoft Teams?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Kristen, do we know if any other planning commission members?
So I heard from Ms. Castile and Mr. McGory that they're not coming.
Actually, it's more obvious than text maps that they're like literally at the streets.
But I haven't heard anything from Mr. Whalen or Mr. Jackson, so I assumed they were going to be joining us today.
structure that guards the. But we can tell they haven't signed in.
Correct, yeah.
So anyway.
Yeah, I get it.
And I just started streaming YouTube also.
Well, we're going to have to wait a few minutes, folks, because we don't have a quorum at this point.
We heard from Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson is going to be virtual?
Is what he told me.
He's not here yet, though. Yes, okay.
No, he told me he was going to be virtual, that he sometimes has trouble getting in
Okay.
the link that he was provided last month and worked for him. I told him if he couldn't get on to call me and I'd let you know.
Okay.
But I haven't heard from him yet, but I know this is hard to phone into here, too.
And then Jade said that she was not going to be able to be here, and so did Pete.
Pete.
Pete, yeah. So either Connor or... Well, we still, we need both of them, right?
Oh, Connor's not in there. No, yeah, Connor.
Connor, of course. That would only give us 100.
100 for.
Do any of you need a printed copy of the agenda for today? No?
Thank you.
I appreciate getting that, that helps me a lot.
Not a problem.
Waiting on a quorum.
What's that?
We are waiting on a quorum.
Oh, got it.
See, my English teacher, this is, this is a change in the language. How's that? Waiting on a quorum would never have been accepted when I was a kid, and it snuck into, it was, it was a waiting for a quorum, but it's snuck into the language. It used to be sort of a regional dialect thing, and now it's pretty universal, everybody says it. Waiting on a quorum would be, oh, you have a waiter who's bringing water to the quorum? Waiting for a quorum would be the... My, my English teacher was... You realize you're being broadcast at the moment? I don't care. You know, it's, it doesn't have to be.
It's the pre-meeting entertainment.
I kind of, I kind of am perfectly aware of that. I don't know if you told me I was wrong or right. I would have been wrong 100 years ago, but today I'm right. That's, that's what I'm saying. You are correct.
Dave, I don't seem to be able to get on this.
That's what I'm saying.
That's Mr. Jackson. Can we phone him and just be on by phone if he can't hook up?
There is a number he can call.
There's a, there's a dial-in number on the email. If he needs it, we can get it to him.
Hey Siri, call Jim Jackson.
Call in Jim Jackson.
Do you know the dial-in number, Kristen?
I have it, yeah.
Excuse me.
We're going to have the dial-in.
Um, I'm at...
Rats. Okay.
Would you like to talk to Kristen, or would you like to just have the dial-in and you can phone and you could just call in on your phone and matter who they were?
For one meeting only.
Yeah, one last meeting.
This is the last time.
Welcome to Parks and Recreation.
Hi, Mr. Jackson.
This is still much more specific.
Okay. Make sure.
Okay, would you like the phone number to call in?
Yeah.
Okay, it's 614... 678.
I don't like my data plan. I love Verizon, and I hate it. You love Verizon, but you hate your data plans?
5228.
If I accidentally leave my data, I don't like, run, use data even though I'm not using any data, where is it going?
And the ID number that you'll need is 518.
There's a glitch in the Wi-Fi. Posted data on this, this thing here. Yeah, yeah. Oh. Well, Turner, I try to remember to turn the data off, but sometimes I forget to turn the data off. Same thing, yeah, I can't. Yeah. The issue for me is I can't get the link updated by email unless I'm, if I'm in the office, I can't get email if I'm on Wi-Fi. No idea why.
Okay.
So I have to turn it off to get the email with the link, and I have to turn it back on for calls. Who's your network administrator?
Oh, okay.
No, I don't know.
Gotcha. Well, we're still waiting on Mr. Whalen also.
You need a good Wi-Fi link for you. We have, we have a really good guy.
All right, thanks, bye-bye.
Tell him about it, probably fix it in a minute. Yeah, his local, you can probably fix it with his phone.
I don't know if anyone has Mr. Whalen's number, wants to, able to contact him.
You could probably figure it out if we, you don't have time to figure it out. You want somebody else to figure it out.
Heard from him also, yeah.
Or, right, call Connor.
Probably at his building.
We may need to...
You mean what?
We may need to remind everyone that this is the last time we can do it.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Hey, any way we can get you in, we are one short.
Oh, you're talking about, you can't, you can't call in next, you, you've got to be here for, for July 1st.
People will have to be in person, board members at least. Staff can still be virtual.
Voting members.
But voting members cannot, starting July 1st.
Well, I don't have Connor's numbers, anybody else? You can, we can let them participate in the meeting, they can't, for him and they can't vote.
Exactly. They could watch.
They could watch.
I mean, I guess they could talk.
We can let them talk, we just can't vote, and they can't count as a quorum.
Yeah.
Should play the Jeopardy music.
That is, I don't know if you're, but Connor's on his way down.
Yeah, okay, right. Should we, oh, okay, that's probably Mr. Jackson.
Jim Jackson?
Is now joining.
Hello, Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Glad you're able to join us.
Yeah, it's, I didn't think I was going to be able to, you know, I'm, I'm two weeks out having total knee replacement, and I'm on a walker, and my wife's got to drive me around, so I'm, I'm fortunate to be able to be here.
Well, thank you. You, you were necessary for us to have a quorum, although we think Mr. Whalen is on his way as well, but I don't see any reason not to call the meeting to order, so I'll do so. And Ms. Broni, if we could do the roll call as all the members that we have so far today.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Zuloff?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
We know, we know both the other planning commission members can't be here. Sorry for the late start, folks. You're, you're watching what inevitably happens with volunteer local government. Sometimes we don't get everybody together as soon as we should, but we're very happy to have the folks here who are offering their time in order to be able to further our community. We are expecting one other member to join us here shortly. We have a couple preliminary things to take care of. The first item is to begin with the consideration of the minutes of the April 28th meeting. Would someone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. A lot of objection, the motion be approved? And hearing no objection, the motion is approved. I must say, I was looking at the minutes and noted that the next meeting would be in May, and I, for the life of me, I could not recall what had been discussed at the May meeting, so I, as Ms. Broni, if she could forward the May minutes to me in draft form, and she very politely replied that we canceled that meeting because we didn't have any business. So that really did explain why I could not remember what occurred at that meeting. Mr. Holliday, you have some new members of your team to introduce, and I'll turn the floor over to you for a little, a couple minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to be here today to introduce two new members of the Department of Community Development. First, we have Alec Oakes, who joined about four weeks ago as our new assistant planner. Alec is a recent graduate of the University of Cincinnati. He gained valuable experience through multiple internships during his time at Cincinnati, and that's really allowed him to hit the ground running handling our various permitting and zoning regulatory work. Alec will actually be presenting the staff reports to you this evening, and we're really fortunate to have him. I'm also joined by Erin Blair, who is our new chief planner. Erin holds a master's degree from Ohio State University. She's gained valuable experience as a consultant with a very reputable firm down in Columbus, and we're thrilled to have her here in Sandusky. She'll be working with you throughout the year on various projects, and, and we're really fortunate to have her. Erin and I are not able to stay for the rest of your meeting, but we wanted to come to introduce, for Erin to introduce herself and, and for me to introduce Erin and Alec. And again, just thank all the commission members for your time here serving on this, this important commission. And I know we've got our city manager here, Eric, and I'm not sure if you want to say any words, but just, lastly, I'll, I'll just say that it's really a pleasure to be here, and I'm really thrilled that we're building back up the community development department, and looking forward to working with all of you throughout the rest of the year. Thank you.
You're both welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
Alec, can I say hi?
Yeah, so I'm glad to be here. From Port Clinton, so just over the bridge, so somewhat of a local. I love what's going on in the city and can't wait to keep going.
Great, thanks.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me. I'm super excited to be here. I got the opportunity to work on the master plan, so I met many of you through the downtown master plan process with MKSK and really kind of fell in love with the city, enjoyed talking with all the stakeholders and the community engagement we did in that process, and just was really excited for the opportunity to come here full-time. I will be working semi-remotely for a couple weeks while I'm just furiously searching for a property, for a home that I'd love to live in, and I will be joining you full-time here as soon as possible. So thanks for the opportunity, and I'm really excited to work together with you to, to keep planning the city. You've all done some amazing work over the past 10 years, it's, it's been great to learn about and, and finally seeing the fruition of that now that COVID's kind of cleared, cleared the path, and it's really exciting, so thank you.
Well, welcome aboard to both of you.
Thank you.
The, the work that community development does is so terribly important, and I didn't really appreciate it until I got involved with city government. And we were talking a little bit earlier today at lunch, you and I had a, get acquainted lunch, and I enjoyed that. One of the things we talked about was the fact that government's going to spend money. It has to do a lot of things, has to prove a lot of things. And the difference between good community development and, and, and not doing community development is you end up with a really bland product. People don't understand what they're missing because they're not trained to look for those things, and that's not their fault, but I mean, the built environment has an enormous impact on how we live and how we feel and what we experience, and the pride in our hometown and our enjoyment of the community, and the work that all of you do collectively is just terribly important. You are really the difference between building a home without an architect and having an architect that makes sure that all sits together, fits together properly. And I, I, I can't thank you enough for the work that you do and for taking a chance on us, too, and coming to Sandusky. We, we have a lot of things going on, and I know when I first met Jonathan, he was sitting there with all of his fingers in the holes in the dykes trying to say, oh, send help! And, and so it's, it's great that you're here, so. Good. And you can, you can scoot out anytime you want, I realize you've got another meeting to attend. Okay. Mr. Chairman, could I?
Thank you very much.
I just want to express some, echoing what you said, but also, the staff has really done an amazing job considering their challenges, and I'm so happy that we are getting back up to full staffing. And the, the, the reason that community development is so important is because people have to want to live here, because if people don't want to live here, businesses don't locate here. If you want jobs, you need to make your community a great place to live. Businesses won't locate where they, where they're, where people don't want to live, and in particular where their management doesn't want to live. So we're moving in the right direction, and as long as we keep that in mind, I think we're going to continue to thrive. Great. Commissioners, are we ready for our first public hearing? In my case, Mr. Oakes, if you want to, are you presenting to us?
I am, yes, yes, sir.
Please, please.
Tom, you can pull that presentation, please. So we have two items on the agenda tonight. One is 431 Columbus Ave for a zoning map amendment, and the second is one here on street for a site plan application. So the zoning map amendment...
Mr. Oakes, maybe if you moved your microphone a little closer to you.
Zoning map amendment for 431 Columbus Ave is on, let's see here. Michael Cox, on behalf of Commodore, at Sandusky LSC, has applied for rezoning of a property from public facilities to general business. So the current zoning is public facilities. The surrounding zoning of this property is mostly general business, which is what he plans to rezone it to, except for the few properties to the south, which is currently used for a church. The site itself is vacant, but was formerly also a church. So the applicant's proposing to rezone this land and transform the existing church into rentable rooms for transient occupancy, office space, and some business space. The Bicentennial Comprehensive Plan outlines a few priorities that I think this project hits. So repurpose vacant buildings to create mixed-use office, residential, retail, and hospitality, hospitality, excuse me, opportunities within the city, particularly downtown, so this is right outside of the downtown corridor. It also supports the development of and rehabilitation of housing types within the city, especially short-term rental opportunities. So the applicant's proposing to rezone and make about 10,000 square feet used for transient rental spaces, particularly big groups such as weddings or larger events. 5,000 square foot for retail and business opportunities, such as, and the application stated, adult art classes and the sale of local, local art. And then the remaining space will be used for office space and storage. So the staff has examined the bicentennial vision and how it relates to the area. We believe that this rezoning could offer a good opportunity towards development of human capital connectivity and help shape Sandusky as a destination city. So this property is on the National Register of Historic Places, so this would, if any exterior changes would be made, would need to be approved by Landmark Commission. So all this being stated, in conclusion, the staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment of the zoning map.
Thank you, Mr. Oakes. Commissioners, I'm going to ask for the applicants to speak in a moment if they wish to, but initially, any questions of Mr. Oakes or other comments? Can you tell us a, a little more about the proposed use of details, or?
Generally speaking, general business kind of is mostly on the service side, and Tom, if you could touch a little bit on this, if you don't mind. I don't know the ins and outs of general business per se, but there were some concerns on future uses on this site, and I think a lot of, a lot of future uses that we had concerns about would not have a problem on this. I do believe that the surrounding zoning being general business as it is, so, let's see, the sites to the east are currently, two, both, two of the three are residential, and one is currently an architecture firm. So it gives a lot of flexibility on what's on the site, which could have good, positive and negative impacts, but I think for this site particularly, and what's being proposed, it's a, it's a big positive and a step in the right direction for the transient occupancy goals. Tom, if you have anything else to add to that?
Nothing additional. I can, I, of course, be here to answer additional questions from staff's perspective, too.
I think that Mr. Zuloff's question went more to additional details on what is proposed to being, to be used and done for that site. Am I right about that? That, that's right, and it's often not requi, it's not required for, for approval of a zoning change, but it can influence the decision. Maybe it'd be a good time to invite the applicants up. That might, if, if you think that would answer the question. Other folks here on behalf of the applicants?
Yeah.
I'm Michael Cox.
Hi, why don't you come up to the microphone so the folks at home can hear us if you're going to be speaking?
My wife Jackie's here as well, she's part of the business.
You're both welcome to come up to the microphone, yeah. That's, that's fine. It's, you do the art stuff? Oh, good.
Yeah.
Now make sure you're up here then.
She's in charge at this time. We're both Sandusky natives, Perkins graduates, and connected to the area, and we've been making some investments up here, very attracted to this building because of its architectural significance. I did have a call with two folks from the city, and it went for 45 minutes or so explaining what we intend to do. Certainly, we don't intend to change anything on the exterior. We're hoping to get the transient rental going so that we can host groups is really what we're aiming at. I know with Sports Force Park, we have teams in the area or sports teams coming to town that might have 15 or 20 people that want to stay under one roof, and also multiple families coming up to go to the Islands or Cedar Point, whatever else is up here going on in the summer. So we hope to target those groups, get them in under one roof, get them downtown so that they can patronize local businesses. Of course, when, when we were growing up here, I graduated in 1998, people stayed out on 250 all the time, that's, that was the target. But now downtown's so attractive, and it's a great place to be, so we're hoping to get the groups to stay down here, whether it's adults or adults with their kids, to go out to eat and frequent these downtown establishments after they're done at Sports Force or the Islands or wherever else they are. That would be the main focus. That also cuts down on the turnover. That way, we don't have, to the extent possible, people coming and going on a daily basis. Hopefully, we'll get people up here for a tournament, and that whole group would be in the facility for, you know, three, four, five days or an entire week. That would cut down on the traffic and the turnover there for surrounding properties. In addition to that, my wife intends to run some art classes out of there. Obviously, that will be attractive not only to visitors, but also folks that live in the community can take part in those. There'll be hopefully multi-week classes, one-off classes, things that people can do while they're in town or on, on a, ongoing basis. Outside of that, really, the remainder of the property will be used just to service those, those two functions, so storage and office space for those, perhaps professional office space as well, to the extent we can. On the inside, as I said, the exterior won't change much at all. Obviously, signage would change, but outside of that, pretty much maintain the parking. We've got at least with the library for parking that we intend to maintain for as long as it's feasible. On the inside, really, it only requires minor changes. It's already sectioned off, there's rooms available, so we'll have to do some electrical and plumbing work, but for the most part, the interior will remain structurally the same. Of course, some design work would be different, and at this point in time, we don't plan on doing anything significant with the sanctuary. Obviously, maintain the stained glass, maintain the organ, and maintain all those unique architectural features, and try to, you know, book some weddings and other things, get people down here. Again, that goes hand in hand with the transient rental. Obviously, a wedding party could have their wedding there and stay on-site and have their wedding reception, you know, if it's small, perhaps on-site and catered, but most likely, hopefully, service some other businesses down here.
I think your wife was largely nodding in agreement as you spoke, so, but, but since you just, you identified, identified her as, I think, the brains of the operation, I wonder if she had something else that, that you'd like to add, ma'am?
I can talk to you about the art part if you wanted to hear about it.
I think, I think the commission would like to hear that, please.
Okay. So my dad was an industrial arts teacher at Perkins, and so I'd like to bring back some of that, maybe even some of his classes that he taught, so I know a lot of friends in the areas still even have their projects. The guy that played the organ, Charles, for, I think he said 25 years, that was my dad's first student, we found out. So, and he, he went home and sent a picture of his project, that he still had, two of them actually, so I would love to bring that class back. Elaine Cheatham, she's a local artist here, too. She taught art in Dublin, and she's going to help me out with the whole art center. Glass enameling is my love. I love enameling, and pottery, and so pretty much any kind of art. We could do yoga classes, you know, Russian board classes, we have those down in Columbus, I don't know if you guys are familiar with those, but it's basically where you take a piece of wood, make a sign and stuff, so. All agents, you do not have to be artistic, I can teach anyone how to do art. Basically, I think that after the year that we've had, I think that art therapy could be a hit. I think everybody could use the whole therapy after COVID, so. And also, date night, you know, parties and stuff, so I think it'd be, birthday parties, I think it'd be a great hit. I don't know of a whole lot of art stuff going on in the city, so I would love to be a part of bringing that here.
Great, thank you both for your comments. Let's, uh... Need a motion? Well, I want, it was a public hearing, so I need to ask a public input. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Broni, did we receive any written comments from any members of the public?
We didn't get anything, right? Nope, we did not.
Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak on the application? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Could you come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, please?
My name is Thomas Bodnar, and I have the architectural office across the street at 432 Columbus, and I'm also interested in historic preservation and have recently taken on a, a project down at, which now known as the Beckling Club, a former home of George Beckling and on the National Register. You know, churches aren't exactly exploding in demand these days, so anytime you get one of these buildings, that's a great building, great Romanesque-style architecture here in this town. Anytime you get one of those, and it has to become a new use, they're very vulnerable. And so I'm glad that they stepped up and are interested in, you know, putting their efforts and monies and talents into something like that, because I think it stabilizes a community, you know, and I, I think those are all legitimate uses compatible with the general business, which is what the neighborhood is. So I don't think there's really any reason that, you know, somebody should be objecting to it, but I'm especially happy that they're putting their, their efforts into it, you know, not just investing, but they're putting their physical and emotional efforts into it, and as local people. I think it'll be good for the community, and I wish them all the best.
You're a great example of that, working on your building as you have, so thank you for that. It looks really great these days.
I got to go down and open it up.
Yeah, I get that. And, and the staff report did indicate, to the point you were making, that as of 2019, in the prior five years, 6,800 churches had closed in the United States, and I think this is just going to be one of those things we're going to have to continue to deal with. I do want to say that I looked at that house, and I said to my wife, or the church, I said, we should make that a house. And, and she said, no way. So, but it's, so I'm glad you got it. I was disappointed when it sold so quickly, but I will, Chair would appreciate a motion at this point. We'll, we'll...
Yeah, I, I'll be glad to make the motion, and I can make my comments under discussion.
Of course.
Yeah, I'd make the motion to approve the application as submitted.
Is there a second? Mr. Zuloff is seconding. Discussion, Mr. Miller?
Oh, yeah, I, I guess I'd like to echo Mr. Bodnar's comments. First, from the perspective of the congregation that I'm sure had some sadness and such to give up that building that has been a stalwart institution in our community for many years. I'm a little bit aware... aware of the historic significance of that church and of some of the things that have gone on there in the past, but my concern is that as churches close, they're not necessarily the easiest thing to find repurposing to, to keep them in a historic condition and the appearance pretty much undisturbed from the outside, but to still to be maintained and so forth. I've been in that building a lot of times, and it would be just so sad to see it fall into disrepair. So to have some creative use that, that really seems to be a great prospect is something that is very exciting to me.
Thank you. Additional comments, commissioners?
I apologize for holding people up, and I wish you guys luck. It sounds like people are in favor, and I'm excited to see what you guys do there.
You didn't hold us up a minute, so it worked out just fine. So it was good. Further comments. Ms. Brony, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah.
Mr. Wayland?
Yes.
That motion is approved. So good luck to you folks. You've got a lot of work ahead of you, but we'll, and we'll all be keeping an eye on you, but rooting for you at the same time. So thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
If I could get my agenda open, to open up again, I'd be able to tell you what the next item of business is. Oh, thank you. I couldn't find it. So, the last meeting of commissioners, we decided to continue until the next meeting, which is today. Proposed amendments to the floodplain administration ordinance that we have. So I don't think that we need a motion to take it back up. Mr. Heil, if I recall correctly, it's just here because we continued it to the next meeting.
This is the tabled flood ordinance?
I didn't, I don't recall if we tabled it, or I thought we actually continued it to the next meeting.
I think we, the motion was to table it until the May meeting, which obviously didn't happen.
Okay.
So I, I think you don't have to move to untable it since it was meant to be discussed at this meeting.
All right. That's what I thought. Thank you. A lot of discussion at the last meeting. Further thoughts?
Well, it seems like I have questions on, on the, on the order, because we tabled a motion to approve or to recommend for the markup we had, and the markup is now been amended. So we either need to, new motion, or we need a motion to amend the, to, to amend the motion to the new markup, because it's, there have been changes to what was, to the, there have been changes to the proposed ordinance since we made the motion, right?
Thank you. Mr. Heil, can you give us some guidance on that? I think that's right.
Sure. If, if memory serves, and we can double-check the minutes, but I believe the motion to amend, adding language passed, and so that language was added, so the current draft before you includes the changes that you made with that motion to amend. So at this point, to Mr. Zuloff's point, if you want to take a motion to approve, to recommend for approval or not, the amended version of the floodplain ordinance--
Right. Or, or we could vote it down and start over.
Or you could vote it down, yes. Correct, yes. Whatever the motion is, one way or the other, yes. But no, those amendments have already been, that amendment passed, and this draft reflects those changes.
But we never voted on the original motion.
No. You voted on the amendment, and then you tabled the--
Oh, yes, but there, aren't there other, there are other corrections that we never voted, that we never discussed, like, or that weren't in the motion, like, including the 1% chance in every instance rather than the single instance it was on the original draft?
So let me suggest this, if I may. I understand what Mr. Zuloff is alluding to. I wonder, Mr. Zuloff, if you or another member would care to make a motion to approve the revised ordinance that is a part of our packet?
Yeah. We don't have to be persnickety about it. I just don't want to cause trouble.
I understand. I didn't accuse you of being persnickety.
No, 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 I'm accusing myself, or asking myself if I am.
But would, would you care to make that motion?
The motion you're suggesting is what?
To, to approve and recommend to the city commission the language regarding the floodplain ordinance that is in our packet.
Right, okay. So we're back into the discussion, right?
Yes. Well, we need a motion.
We didn't have to take it off the table because it was still, right? So we suspended, we suspended debate. Because there, there's going to be additional, I'm going to bring up one additional point. So, so I'm not ready to make that motion. I wondered a couple things. Number one, has there been any, has anybody budged on their thoughts in light of the recent flooding event, and has that influenced anybody's thinking on the, on the wisdom of abandoning the freeboard or maybe compromising on the freeboard? The second question I had is, on the latest revision, we did, I'm very pleased that we responded to the concerns about being specific on any request for variance from the, the elevation requirements. We did that, but it really didn't address being specific on other requests for the variance. It sort of, sort of invites a, the wording invites a very, a request for a variance, like a blanket, a blanket exemption from the, from the ordinance. So I'm not too concerned about that, so if nobody else cares about that, I'll, I'll forget about that. But I, I am interested in whether we can properly revisit the question of, of the freeboard, and, and whether anybody's interested in that.
Commissioners, anything to share with Mr. Zuloff in, in that regard?
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I cannot relieve myself of my concern that some freeboard is possibly appropriate. In light of the recent high wave action that shut down the Jackson Street Pier, though I understand the Mylander Pavilion was not adversely affected, I did not go to or damage to the Chasse. I understand that the very recently greatly fortified Chasse had, had some damage from, from wave action and such. And I don't mind asking the question that was asked and answered last time about possibly compromising. If two-foot of freeboard is considered onerous by developers and let the buyer beware, I guess I'm okay with that, but if you are a new buyer in the area of a project that you don't have experience with this community and how bad it can get on those rare occasions, for example, you, Mr. Chairman, I understand you live out there. I'm sure your house is built sufficiently high that two-foot of freeboard wouldn't have been an issue in your house, or, or Mr. McGory is quite likely, or, or others. But if, if I was buying the product of a developer who saved money by not putting any additional elevation in that situation, I might be sorely disappointed by that once-in-25-year wind event that, that shut down Jackson Street Pier, closed First Street. There was a lot of public impact from that, and the way we are built now is my understanding. And I can ask the question again, and it can be answered the same way again, but, but I, I just have to feel, I, I do feel that if two-foot is too much, going to one-foot seems like it's meeting in the middle, and the likelihood of a two-foot, an event that would affect a two-foot, maybe that's not going to happen so much, but, but the likelihood of an event occurring that one-foot would save stuff seems to be much more likely.
So Mr. Miller has indicated an openness to reconsidering that issue. Mr. Heil, let me just ask you this. I think at the last meeting, we had two motions that were defeated six to one, one to add two feet of freeboard and one to add one foot of freeboard. Are we permitted to revisit this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's what I needed to know. Other, other members of the commission that have some thoughts on the issue that Mr. Zuloff has raised?
I, through you, Mr. Chair, I think that it's appropriate for you guys to question this, and that's what we're here for. But I, myself, have not changed. I'm comfortable with what staff is comfortable with and FEMA is comfortable. I think that's good enough for me.
Mr. Jackson, anything that you have to add, sir?
I'll, I'll be honest with you. What, I, I've read, I've, I've read everything that they've sent me, but like I said, I, I'm two weeks out of total new replacement, and I, and I haven't really been doing a whole lot of concentration. I don't even know I should be voting on this, to be honest with you.
All right. Well, I'm in the same place that I was before, but I'm sympathetic to the, the concerns that are raised. But for the reasons that were discussed with Mr. Snyder and others, I, I still come out where I did before.
Well, Mr. Chairman--
Yes, sir.
It would be helpful for, to know how futile the discussion was, to know if Mr. Jackson intends to vote on the question.
Mr. Jackson, are you prepared to vote on the legislation this evening?
To be honest, really, I'm, I'm really not prepared to vote on it, because like I said, I, I've read everything that they've sent me. But as far as being able to research some of the things that I planned on researching before my operation, I, I really didn't have a chance to. I was going to go to the, to the, to the, the Ohio rules, but I haven't had a chance to do that. So to be honest with you, I'm, I'm uncomfortable voting yea or nay on this because of the situation I was put in because of my physical condition.
Understood. Mr. Heil, I need a little bit of guidance here. I don't, we've been kicking this around several meetings now, and we do have a quorum that still is, is available and prepared to vote on the legislation. And I would think that in light of what I, what we've just heard, it would be appropriate for Mr. Jackson to abstain, but the other four members are able to take up the legislation. Does that seem right to you?
That would be correct. If Mr. Jackson would prefer not to vote, he can abstain. You have five members, five would count for quorum, and if four are in the affirmative on any motions, that motion would pass.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a couple, if it's a two-two vote, then what happens?
It's defeated.
Yes. And actually, if it's a three-two vote, it would also be defeated. Although--
Oh.
Yeah, although the planning commission rules are silent on this, generally speaking, our charter requires the majority of the board to pass actions.
So it takes four votes?
It will still take four votes to pass--
So generally speaking, it always takes four votes to pass an action of the board?
If you have seven, yeah. For this board, if you have, since you have--
If you have seven members, not seven present?
Right. Correct.
Okay, and, but does that apply to procedural issues or only votes on, yeah, okay, yeah. Certainly, yeah, on, on legal actions by the board, it would certainly be required, procedural stuff.
Well, what is the will of the commission, then, with respect to the legislation?
One more clarifying question, clarifying for me, perhaps. I know this happened last time, but I want to be reassured about the new FEMA floodplain map drawings. I was refreshed in the minutes to understand that they're different now, that they have been adjusted since the previous requirements of, of the freeboard. They've been adjusted to compensate for wave action. Could you explain that to me again? Like, I don't think I really have a picture in my mind of what changed of, of the floodplain map based on that.
Is Josh here? Is Mr. Snyder available?
Yeah, this is Josh.
Okay, because I was really beginning, becoming fearful that another lawyer might answer that question, so I'm glad that you're here.
I wasn't going to touch it.
Yeah, so, so with the new mapping, when it does come out, it is not yet official, so it's not in effect, and we, we still do not have a date of effectiveness for that. However, when it does become effective, there is a new zone, new to us, used elsewhere along the coast, that does address wave action and run-up waves inland from the, the edge of the water. So, yeah, there is, there is some, they, they account for that in the new mapping.
My, my thought then, if you can, if you can hear me, would I be correct to understand that by dropping that two-foot of freeboard, really, kind of what I've been advocating, that compromise of one-foot or whatever, it's really adjusted for with this yet unseen new mapping that it would, it would compensate? And, and the reason, the reason I say it, again, that, that day or the next day, I toured the Marblehead Peninsula, and I was so amazed by the size of the boulders that were up on the plaza next to the Marblehead Lighthouse, and by the veritable snowdrift of tons, thousands of pounds individual boulders that washed like a snowdrift over that perimeter road. I, I was just astounded by how much those waves pushed stuff up there. And I guess I, as I said, I, I don't see what happened on the Chasse, but I understood that that was closed out there impassable for a while by, by the stuff that moved around out there. I, I didn't see that, but I, I could not believe what I was seeing at Marblehead.
So to answer the question of, does, does the run-up wave action take account for the freeboard that we inflicted on ourselves for the last 12 years since 2008, right?
Yeah, it sounds like it does, if I'm understanding that.
It, it does, with the caveat that the, the wave action zone is, is only a portion of our entire flood hazard area. It doesn't blanket it like our two-foot freeboard does. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but it, it's really the at-risk part. It's the part that, that would have, that did adversely impact Ottawa County that I witnessed. I mean, that's, where the, where the waves are surging up, that's the concern, not how much two-foot elevation would change. I'm concerned where those waves were running. At, at East Harbor, at East Harbor, that, that peninsula that goes out to the break wall where they have that lighthouse, waves went all the way over that thing. I mean, that was, that's 15, 20-foot above lake level, and the waves surged over the entire thing. I was amazed. I've never seen that before. But East Harbor was closed. You couldn't even get past, you couldn't get past the campground. They had it all closed. But, you know, the next week I went out, and you could tell where the wash from the lake went over that entire, that entire peninsula.
Mr. Zuloff? So I told myself I was going to let it go. I was, but now I'm motivated by some of the comments I'm hearing. So at this recent event, the, the base water level at the lake was a, a foot and a half lower than it was the prior year, which were, that was record-setting. We actually set records, I believe in, well, certainly in May last year. So had this event happened last year, it would have, you know, it would have been a lot worse. It would have been a foot, all that would have happened at a foot, foot and a half higher. So it would, it wouldn't have been just wave action that would have been the problem. It was the, the, the wind in the, in the Sett would have driven the water up high, higher inland, and there were some inland areas that were affected too. So that's just the point I'm going to try to make, and I'm going to let it go. And now I have a question for our law director. I'm sort of still processing-- I'm sort of still processing this, that we need four votes, four votes minimum for every action by this board, because that hasn't been the practice in the past. And that would also mean we need a unanimous vote to take action tonight? Is that what you're saying? Because we only have four voters?
The abstention does count as a no vote, normally speaking. So out of the five, yes.
That would be a no. So we would need four yes votes to move forward tonight?
Yes.
I'm terrified by that power. Anyways, yeah, so, because we have, at most, we can have four yes votes tonight.
Right. Now, are you indicating that you would not vote in favor tonight?
I was, I resolved to make a futile no vote just to send the message that I didn't approve of abandoning the freeboard.
It seems then that we are moving in the direction of you're wanting to have additional input from other commission members and again continuing this legislation. Do I read you right?
I'm not sure I understood what you're.
So I'm suggesting that as I am trying to interpret what you wish to do, it is to wait until we have a more fulsome set of discussion.
Four votes, not a vote in you.
Right.
That would, that would, that would be an option. I'm just also pointing, trying to process the paradox I'm seeing, because if we can't, let's say there was a no vote and you only had three yes votes and that was not sufficient, then you couldn't make a recommendation either way without, even though we have, even though we have a quorum, we couldn't move forward. Because if you can't get four votes, we were required to recommend for or against this, right?
Right.
So if we don't have unanimity, we, we can do neither. Because if you made the motion to deny, to recommend against, right? We were required to make a recommendation. This has to be, the city commission needs a recommendation from the planning commission. That's in the ordinance.
Yes, I would say, Mr. Zuloff, that there are many paradoxes in life that we will never ultimately be able to resolve. But the chair would entertain a motion to continue, again, the legislation until the next meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Miller?
I mean, if I didn't, we would be in the same position looking for the four votes.
Agreed.
I'm not threatening to do it. I'm just sort of torn with it.
Yes, okay.
Just out of curiosity at this point, if we recommended not to recommend and voted against that, what happened?
We'd have no answer. That's my point.
Still no.
It's still no. There's no recommendation. So it dies there. Yeah. So Ms. Brony, technically, I think it's a non-debatable motion. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
I don't know if I have a name. Am I supposed to vote on this now?
The question is simply whether to continue this legislation until the next meeting. And so.
Okay, yes, yes.
And Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
All right, that is continued.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a quick question of the law director?
Please.
Then, what, where does this leave prior actions by this board that were done, say, with three votes with five members present? Or, I'm still trying to, maybe, maybe we should work off that. Never mind that question. We can, we can work that online or something outside of the meeting. I have, I have questions, not necessarily, that are necessarily forward in business right now.
It's a good thing you're not Catholic, because the whole idea of the Trinity would just kill you. Okay. It's a paradox. You kind of have to let it be. All right. We have been advised that the O-Sports application has been withdrawn, or I guess they've asked for us to continue it yet another month. So hopefully, we will be able to take a look at that at the next meeting. And we do have a site plan application submitted on behalf of Safe Harbor Marina's. And I understand that GW Contractors is the applicant. Is, Mr. Oaks, I believe that you have a presentation you're going to make to the question?
Yes.
All right.
So, next slide, please, Tom. One more, please. So the site is currently zoned for GM General Manufacturing. The sites to the east are currently multifamily residential, to the south, two-family residential, and to the west is zoned for public facilities. Existing use of this site is marina, and the proposed use is still going to be marina, just an additional storage unit and amenities building. The property currently contains three buildings totaling just under 100,000 square feet. And the proposed storage building will add approximately another 30,000 square feet. And the amenities building will add 3,500 roughly square feet. The proposed height of the new metal storage building is 34 feet 8 inches. So the big requirement we are looking at is parking and if the new building would, would not meet the current requirements needed. So with the building on, on top of existing parking spaces, you still have 415 rough spaces. And the requirement is, excuse me, 415 would be the requirement. 380-ish spaces, spaces would be what is being proposed, excuse me, opposite.
Yeah, that's my thought.
Yeah, sorry about that. So no further parking is needed based on the proposal and everything is good. So based on that, the staff recommends the approval of the proposed site plan for one here on the street.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, a question I would have is not about the actual application. I have a question about whether this application for these specific changes to the site implies any approval for existing situations. I can't, in checking this out, I was, wound up hearing from a neighbor there or two. I'm concerned, I was always concerned, but going around that corner, there seems to be quite an encroachment on, on the right-of-way. I don't know if the applicants are aware of that, but the fence, the gate, and the, and the keypad, well, the, is probably in what seems to be the city right-of-way. And in addition, there's a new structure there, a brick structure that seems to be there to, decorative, it looks nice, to protect the keypad. And it's nearly at the center line of the right-of-way. And I'm unaware of any encroachment license. Maybe, maybe there is or maybe staff knows. If there's an encroachment license there or any other process that permitted that, and maybe we can follow up on that if we have to. I don't want that to hold up this question. But I would like to make sure that approval of this site plan does not imply approval of the status quo on other, other features of the current site.
Mr. Heil, would you be in a position to confirm or deny that, one way or the other?
Not right off the top of my head, but if, we can always look into something like that.
No, I meant, the question I think that I understand Mr. Zuloff to be asking is, if we approve the application in front of us, does that necessarily or impliedly grant approval from any other non-conforming conditions or encroachments?
I'm sorry. No. I mean, this is, they're on a case-by-case basis. I don't think you're.
So this is, our approval will be specific to these proposed changes and would not imply approval of or acceptance of non-compliant features on the site?
I'm sorry. I guess I don't quite understand your question.
Okay. There's an, there's an encroachment that.
Right.
That on the street. I just want to make sure that our approval of this doesn't imply, I don't want to address that question tonight. I just want to make sure that this approval doesn't imply, because it's, because this encroachment is on this site plan that's being submitted, I want to make sure that our approval of the application doesn't imply acceptance or approval of the encroachment.
No, it would not. It's just, it's just the application before the commission that you're approving.
And for all I know, it's lawful just the way it is. For all I know, there's a, there's an encroachment license or something already there. I don't know. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners? The applicant is here. I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, were you about to say something?
No, I was, I was going to motion approval of the recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the site.
Well, you were going to, or was it a motion, or did you want to hear from the applicant first?
He accepted, but I'd be glad to hear from the applicant.
Yes. And so there's been a motion to approve the application and Mr. Whalen has seconded that. I would love to hear from the applicant since you waited here. If there's anything you care to add, please step to the, to the microphone, give us your name and address and tell us who you represent. I can see on your shirt that one I got figured out.
Hi, my name is Mark Moyer with GW Contractors, address 4285 North State Route 53, Fremont, Ohio. I have also Jared Pavick with me and Jerry Parsons, both from Safe Harbor Marina's. Probably any other questions? I don't know anything about the fence. But basically, we're just proposing a 30,000 square foot storage building. And it would actually be phase one. The amenity building is continued into that phase one. And actually, they would like to eventually tear down the main building that is kind of an old dilapidated building and an eyesore. So we're trying to get the first building of the first phase done first before we can tear that down so we have a place for the boats to go. So we're trying to really dress it up and make it look at least presentable. So get rid of the old building, because it's, it's pretty dilapidated.
So we're going to see you again?
Most likely, yes.
We hope so.
It'll be him. Well, actually, this.
I'm the regional vice president for Safe Harbor. And what's got it, Mark had talked about, is with us adding this new building, of course, it'll bring more revenue to the area, brings more revenue to us. Tearing down the center section, if and when we get to that point, will just turn that property over to just a premier piece of property and create more green space and more ability to do outside functions and stuff right now today. For those of you who've been around a while, it's the old Vulcan Materials Plant that Hody's bought back in, geez, I don't know, 87. And we've been beautifying it all along. The Hody's did, International did. Safe Harbor now has put a couple million dollars into the property for infrastructure and stuff. And we continue with Safe Harbor, we continue to want to grow our properties and just continue to make them better. We don't leave them stagnant by any means. We own 140 properties and continue to put money into them every single year. So it's, it's a good, it's a good thing. And he's just a dynamite GM.
I don't know about that. But yeah, we, we think it fits in too with the adding some things to the west side, mostly industrial area. We want to clean up, clean that up and, and, you know, make it presentable, so.
We did put a building, a new building there in 2003. And the fence and everything was there at that time, so.
Yeah, prior to that.
2003 is when Hody sold it and Marina's International bought it, so.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, a question. When you mentioned the Vulcan Materials Production Plant, it triggered a memory. Was, this, this property adjoins the Health Department's property?
Yes.
And there's a building on the Health Department property, what's now the Health Department property, that I had understood was part of the old Vulcan facility? Is that?
Are you referring to what they call the Telamon Building?
It's, it's the northernmost building in sort of a C configuration of where the Health Department is there on.
Okay, I believe that's called the Telamon Building.
Oh, okay.
And we, the Hody's bought that back in 87. That is now we got. That sits on our property.
Okay.
And we leased.
But that other building that's on the Health Department's property, that was not part of the Vulcan ever that you know of?
No, not to my knowledge, no. The other one that sits right across the street from them on the north side was a printing company.
Yes, I wasn't talking about that one on the west of that. All right, that was curiosity.
Additional questions of the applicants, commissioners? Gentlemen, thank you for being here. Ms. Brony, did you get the names of everyone?
No, I was not.
Jared Pavick, J-A-R-E-D, Pavick, P-A-V, Victor L-I-K.
Okay. And yours was?
Parsons, first name Jared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Ms. Brony, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
And Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
That motion, the application are approved. Are there any further business? If not, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you.